The Town of Berlin. Country charm at the center of Connecticut.
Welcome, everybody, to our town council meeting. We called the meeting to order and we'll start with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, and under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much.
Councilor Angela Kristensen?
Here.
Councilor Daniele. Councilor Giannoni?
Here.
Mayor Kaczynski?
Here.
Councilor Luddy? Councilor Padre Arro?
Here.
Councilor Rosso?
Here.
Mayor Yedderkorn?
Thank you very much. First up is our proclamation for National Public Health Week. So I'll read it. Ray, accept it. I'll read it and I'll... The American Public Health Association has proclaimed April 2nd through April 8th, 2018, as National Public Health Week, and this year's national public health theme is Healthiest Nation 2030: Changing Our Future Together. It focuses on rallying around the goal of making the United States the healthiest nation in one generation by 2013. For over 20 years, the annual celebration of National Public Health Week reminds us of the fundamental role that our own state and local health departments play every day in the health of our communities. So the Town of Berlin, together with its neighboring towns of Weathersfield, Newington, Rocky Hill, receives quality public health service through its regional health department, the Central Connecticut Health District, now in its 21st year of service. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Mark H. Kaczynski, do hereby proclaim April 2nd, 2018, April 8th, 2018, as National Public Health Week in Berlin, Connecticut. I encourage all of our citizens to join me in the celebration and acknowledging the critical role of public health in prevention and in helping individuals and communities to achieve and maintain good health. Day-to-day, they have March 2018. Ray, I'm representing the health district. Presenting with the... Sorry, we don't... We usually have a frame. I guess budget cuts, we can't even afford those anymore. I don't know. We'll get you a frame. So anyway, that's the proclamation. And Charlie, if I could read a little thing, because I have to give the plug for the Central Connecticut Health District. Good. As being the only representative to today here. Okay. Glad you're here. On behalf of this health district, and as the mayor already pointed out, includes Weathersfield, Rocky Hill, Newington, and Berlin. The director of health is Charlie Brown, director of health, and Judy Sartucci is the chair of the board, each are apologizing for not making available today. The Berlin representatives are myself, Carolyn Willsaki, who was not available to attend, who is also the longest-serving board member, and Dr. Pat Checo, who is... I used to work with the state health department and formerly director of health at Bristol-Burlington. Let me just read the mission statement really quickly for the district and give you a little bit of an idea of some of the activities that have been done. The mission statement: Improving the quality of life in our communities through prevention of disease and injury. Fostering of a healthy environment and promotion of the health of people and agencies member towns. That's basically the help, public health, or key, or mission statement for almost all the health departments. The type of activities that are done are private well approvals, approval of septic systems, inspection of food service establishments, which probably touches almost everybody here all the time. They run flu clinics, pool inspections, hair salons, and nail salons, respond to foodborne and waterborne disease outbreaks, educate constituents to prevent disease outbreaks. We've had a number of outreaches to the high school for different education issues for food service, and respond to emergencies and identify public health issues. And thank you, Mayor, for the proclamation. Thank you. Okay, now we have our audience of citizens. Is there anyone who wishes to speak tonight? I hear, and see no hands, so we will close that portion of the meeting and we'll move on to our meeting agenda. Start with our consent agenda. If all of our counselors have read the consent agenda and have no discussion points, we'll go ahead and take a motion. Move to accept the consent agenda. You have a second on that?
Second.
Appreciate that. Any discussion? Hearing none? All is in favor? Aye. Opposed? So moved. So on to new business.
The first thing on the agenda tonight is an update by, for the Mattabasik Sewer District. Hart Simonian is here to give an update of services they provide, and I think he has some pretty good news for us this year.
Thank you, Jack, and good evening to the council members.
We getting a refund or something?
Maybe, yeah. Actually...
That would be the really good news.
We did give you a refund, we just built it into your assessments, so no wonder you're still getting a refund. So better than the state's doing this year, right?
Oh, yes.
So I'll just also put out that we have two members, our board chairman, John Dunham, and Jim Fallon is also here, representing Berlin on the Mattabasik Sewer District. I'm not sure if you received the council item and some of the backups, but I could kind of just go through here and touch on some of the highlights. But obviously, this is a good year. We're able to use more of the credits from the Middletown buy-in this year on the budget side. So by doing so, we kept Berlin's assessment at a minus 1.2% increase. So we're spending quite a bit of money on capital this year. We have some pretty major projects coming up. So even though our capital went up, we're keeping our operating costs down. We looked at some of the numbers pretty hard this year, electricity budget, and also some of our other operating costs. We're able to reduce some of those. We're also talking to an energy performance contractor right now. We're under contract with them, so we're looking at upgrading our lighting and also some operations, maybe a fuel cell too as well for the district, which probably should help our operating costs in the future. So we're trying to do those things as well and keep things under check. I could also mention that I think Berlin has benefited from their infiltration inflow project. I mentioned here in the gen item that their flows went down from 17.6% to 17.47%. So although that seems relatively minor, you're doing that in a period of time where rain has picked up the last couple of years. And obviously, you know, any reduction in your percent of flow versus other communities could help your assessments too as well. So we're in year, I think it's year three of our nitrogen debt payments, about $107 million project. We have about $79 million in debt that we have to pay back. So fortunately, those funds, the budget for those goes down every year because it's on a fixed principle, so the interest actually comes down each year, so that'll actually start reducing, and then by year 2034, they'll be paid off. I did provide some numbers to the finance director too, and if they need any updated information for any bond deals coming up, we could certainly do that as well. So overall, you know, the budget's in relatively good shape. Again, we are looking at some capital items that we'll be funding over the next couple of years. We have a five-year capital improvement plan that we're working off of. Middletown's anticipated to join into the district for the rest of their flows sometime in 2019. I'm going to give a safe estimate, probably by July or August, which is about a year away. Once they do, then they'll become part of the assessments on the operating cost, which will help Berlin, New Britain, and Cromwell as well in terms of their assessments. So their flow's going to go up quite a bit, probably about 20% to 25% of our capacity will be attributed to Middletown, so that'll obviously help with assessments. They're already paying their fair share of debt service because they already have reserve capacity out to the year 2030, so the debt portion of the assessment won't change, but the operating costs certainly will. So that's kind of some of the good news, where John, myself, and the board members from the respective towns are doing this for each of the towns over the next month or so, just so you can hear things and ask any questions about the district and what we're trying to do. Obviously, some of the savings on energy, I think, will be a big difference. Electricity's our biggest part of our budget, so anything we could save on that would be a huge impact. Obviously, we have a backup generator, we have to run that during emergencies, so we do have to keep up backup power, but electricity and chemicals are probably our two biggest variable costs that we're working harder trying to control. So with that...
So Middletown, what do they do now? They have their own...
They have their own sewage treatment plant that's in the process of being closed down. They're building a pump station near Decoban Drive off of Route 9, and they already have a force main that's connected into the district. So once that pump station is complete, those falls will come to us. They also have flows from the northern part of Middletown that already do come to the district. So this will be their, kind of their downtown area district. Falls will probably be around 5 to 6 million gallons per day for average flows, and our average flow is currently about 18 to 20. So about 20 to 25% of our current flows. We did, as part of the upgrade project that was done, we did get a little bit more capacity on our, both our, what they call secondary flows, which is the flows that go through the whole entire treatment system. That's up to 55 million gallons per day, and Berlin went from 5.25 up to 7.9 is what you're allowed for assessment. And then for peak flow, like during a really wet weather event, your flows are allowed up to 12 million gallons per day. So we were able to reduce or increase some of the capacity that way, but obviously, I know Berlin's doing some of my and I work, and EPA is putting a lot of pressure on communities to reduce their infiltration inflow because of the impact to the Connecticut River and nitrogen treatment. So we're going to have a newsletter, it's going to come out sometime in June, we'll send some over here too as well. It kind of gives you a lot of information about the district and nitrogen removal, what we do, how we compare it to the rest of the state as well. So it's pretty good information about what we do over there.
Great. Thanks, Eric. All right. Questions for...
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Questions? Come again?
Thank you.
Second thing on the item tonight, on the agenda, is the Worthen Meeting House building renovations. They, as you know, in the past six to eight months, they had, they'd been working on the design for the renovations of the, quote, "meeting house." As part of that process, they had started going down and doing some preliminary schematic designs, but as they got into it, there are some changes that need to be done, well, they decided need to be made. Part of this, I believe, is there's a balcony, there's an original design that had a balcony, and they want to, and right now, there's a balcony in there, so there's a design change to incorporate that. Unfortunately, Doug Solak can't be here tonight, but we do have Kent McCoy from the architectural firm, and we have Lorraine Stubbe here from the historic district.
From the Friends.
Oh, excuse me, from the Friends, of the Worthen Meeting House. You have those roles. And they're here to describe to you what the changes are, and I think Kent has maybe a PowerPoint that you can, he can just quickly show you to give you an idea of where they are in the design.
Great. All right. So, is it down there so we can watch the PowerPoint?
It hasn't worked well.
Can I sit over there?
Yeah.
Let's see. Advanced to... Let me turn it back here. All right. Okay. Yeah, so I'm Kent McCoy, as you said, from QAM Architecture, formerly Smith Edwards McCoy Architecture. We merged with QAM this past summer, and we were working on the Worthington Meeting House project at that time. And the, as described, certain changes evolved in the design as we went along. We started working on a, from a schematic that was already prepared by Silver Petracelli Architects, and in the course, this is their scheme here, and you can see the, what the proposal was for an addition on the right-hand side of the building that would house the elevator and stairs. We have a lot of experience with historic structures, everything from the state capitol to Mount Vernon, and know a bit about the, both the state and the national historic preservation organizations, and felt that it probably would not fly for historic tax credit purposes to have this addition on the building. So in meetings with the Friends, we, I'll just flip through some of the text, we came up with this alternate scheme, which you see here. The lower-left drawing is the one that shows the balcony on three sides. The X is the middle, in the middle is the portion of the floor that's open to below. We met with the state historic preservation officer at the site and presented this with the Friends and Doug, and definitely, the historic preservation officer's preference was this. They would like to see the building returned to its earliest appearance, and this satisfies that goal. At the same time, we're able to end the basement level, because when the basement was redone, it was done well with nice high ceilings, we can get the rest of the program that the Friends wanted, the meeting room, collection, storage, of course, mechanical spaces, toilet rooms, a little kitchen, all that, we could get on the lower level so that we can keep the main level and the balcony level as open for display as possible and return it to its original appearance. This is the proposed elevations in the building, again, returning it as much as possible to the original appearance. These are the, this is another scheme that was not deemed favorably by the Shpo's office, State Historic Preservation Office, because it did not return the building to its original plan. We also went through the exercise of having the project costed by a contractor, a construction manager, to see what the, to evaluate what the cost difference between the two schemes was, and it was not much. I think it was on the order of maybe $250,000. One was by 2.2 and one was 2.5 roughly.
I think it was only $100,000.
Oh, $100,000? I dropped my glasses. You're right, you're right, the rain. You're right, it is $100,000, $144,000 difference. Yes, thank you. So a little bit more about the meeting with the Shpo. We got this letter from Washington that, again, supported the idea of returning the building to its earlier appearance. This is from the National Park Service on the right-hand side. We also did some additional work for the Friends to examine seating plans so that the museum space on the first floor could also be used as a meeting space or an event space. And we were directed to try to get about 100 chairs on the first floor and about 75 in that first-floor meeting room, and we were able to achieve both of those. So basically, the revisiting of the schematic, kind of discarding the Silver Petracelli plan, and going to a plan that would be amenable to the State Historic Preservation Office and to the Friends, caused us to kind of redo the schematic. And that's the reason that we were seeking additional funds, because the scope of work exceeded what we had originally agreed to do. And basically, this is my proposal letter that I think you've probably all seen, that seeks additional funds for the design development phase. And you'll see in this document, it says $26,400, but you already have a $10,000 credit with us that we never spent from the original contracts, which really only $16,400, and then in some conversations with Doug Solak, I lowered that, I think, to $13,400, I think is what is before you. So that's, that's the history of it and why we're seeking the additional funds, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
I do have a question.
Yeah.
When you came before us...
I'm sorry, Karen, you're going to have to be on mic.
Probably go back up.
Okay.
So my question is, when you came before us before, you talked about ATA regulations. Will this be accessible to people who are unable to climb stairs to get to the second floor?
Yes. We still kept an elevator in the project and handicapped accessibility to one entrance, but rather than handling it in addition, we pulled the elevator into the interior of the building, which also saved quite a bit of cost from, rather than having to build the additions. So yes, it's still fully handicapped accessible with handicap accessible, toilet rooms in the basement.
Wonderful, thank you.
Sure.
Questions? No? Okay. And I, so, and the money, the funding, the...
Funding, the funding is there. It's outlined what the council would take it to, and I talked to Lorraine today. We will expend the funds from the budget that's been, been held by the town. Once this part of the project is complete, we'll sit down with Lorraine, we'll sit down with Doug, they'll send, submit to the state for reimbursement. They have, Lorraine and the Friends have obtained $20,000 in grants, and will be reimbursed up to $20,000 back into the fund once this part of the design is complete.
All right. Okay. All right? Good? Thank you.
Thank you.
For the presentation and take a motion on this.
Move to increase purchase order number 180524 by $13,900, which was originally awarded to Smith Edwards McCoy for $20,000, and by merger now known as QAM Architecture for an amount not to exceed $33,900 to complete the design development for the Worthington Meeting House renovation.
Second? Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All is in favor? Aye. Opposed? So moved? Great. So it's great to see it's going back, it's going to go back to what it originally was.
Yeah.
That was good.
It's actually like the, you could see the beams from the balcony.
Yeah, I remember when I was in it that day. You guys, that's when we started talking about, remember, about the balcony and...
Yeah. I think it's going to be an incredible space.
Yeah. It looks great. It looks fantastic.
Excited about it.
Yeah. Great. What a great addition to Berlin, we finally get that done. We know it's been many, many, many years, but hopefully, we'll get it, we'll get it done. We're on, it seems like we're on the road, finally, moving down the road at least, right? Yeah. Great. Okay, thank you.
Item number three is a way to seal bid for the New Britain Fence Company. The Parks and Parks Department is requesting a waiver on a bid, sealed bid. They normally have to repair lots of fences during the year. Normally, New Britain Fence has been their lowest price in the preferred vendor they have to use, so they're requesting that they increase their purchase order. It goes over the $10,000 threshold, so we need to come to the council to waive the bidding process. Steve Wood is here to describe the use of the fencing and repairs.
Okay.
Last year, we cut it out for bids because it was going to be under $10,000, and with a tree that fell on the fence at Willard Hubbard School, so Gary Puccini, and a neighbor's house, Jason DeClark's Grove, with us having to finish the final product of Zipadelli, that fence came in at $5,000, which will put us over the $10,000 threshold. And New Britain Fence is like $2,500 cheaper than the other two competitors, so we'd rather, we'd like to increase their PO up to $15,000 to fix the repairs and to complete Zipadelli Field.
Great. Always a tree, always a problem.
Yep.
Especially lately. Okay. Motion on this?
Move to waive the town's bidding process and authorize the acting town manager to increase purchase order 181224 for New Britain Fence Company LLC to a sum not to exceed $15,000, as this is in the best interest of the town.
Second on that?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
So I actually do have a question. I've had occasion to contact New Britain Fence about the Defense and Conservation Commission, and I have to say, I found them to be not as easy to work with and not as inexpensive as another company. So I'm just wondering, are they professional in how they do their work?
Never sit down, Steve, till we're done. Just kidding, just kidding.
We've been working directly with New Britain Fence for about 10 years, and every time we've reached out to Willie, day or night, he's always come out and given us fast service. I attached the three other quotes to this one, and it'll show that he's drastically lower than the other three. We've never, in the 10 years, had any situation or anything with him.
Okay. Just a question.
Yep.
Because I didn't find him to be as forthcoming when we had to work with him, and he wasn't the one we were going to choose, so I just, just a question.
Okay.
Refresh my memory, but this is the company that came in and fixed Percival Field when no one else would do it, right?
Correct.
Thanks.
Okay. Any, yeah, yeah, well, I don't know, maybe you shouldn't have. Any other questions? Hearing none? Motion on the floor? All is in favor? Aye. Opposed? So moved. Thank you.
Item number four is a request to waive the field fees at Percival Soccer Field for St. Paul's School. Borough Park and Recreation Commission, after meeting on March 8th, recommended that the field fees not to exceed $1,295 be waived for St. Paul's School at the Percival Field. Janet Shaw is here to answer any questions.
Well, thank you. Do you have any questions?
No, is it?
They, they, this is the first time they're using our fields. They were going to use them last year, but the timing didn't right, work with the Berlin Youth Soccer as to when they had the fields, and Berlin Youth Soccer had priority over the fields, so they ended up going somewhere else, so now they're trying to come in this year. They do a lot for our town. They constantly do clothing drives and food drives for our food pantry, so, and being a nonprofit, commission felt that it was okay to waive the fees for them.
Okay. Any questions? Hearing none? We take a motion?
Move to approve the waiving of all field fees not to exceed $1,295 for the St. Paul's School, Kensington, for the use of Percival Field during the spring season.
Second on that?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All is in favor? Aye. Opposed? So moved.
Okay, item number five.
Still there?
Jen's still here.
Yep.
There's a waiver of field rental fees for Nutmeg State Games in the amount of $9,615.
So Nutmeg Game has been here for a number of years. We waive the field fees every year. It's field and light fees. The $9,600 may not be what it actually comes down to, it may be less, because when we book $9,600, it's based on if they get the max numbers for the tournament, and they have the maximum of fields and max number of lights. Once they get all their registrations in, that cost could go down. Last year, I believe, it was between $5,000 and $6,000. They pay for all out-of-pocket labor costs and materials, which is estimated this year to be about $8,100 based on the hours of the event. This year, the Parks and Recreation Commission, due to the $90,000 of work we put into Zipadelli, we made Zipadelli a local-only field. Nutmeg Games has always used Zipadelli. This year, we explained to them, and we offered them Beretta Field. Public Grounds has done a phenomenal job of really sprucing that field up. We thought it'd be a good way to publicize that. Patrick Fisher was fantastic and totally okay with that, moved to Beretta Field, then Patrick, myself, and Chris Edge sat down and we worked on how to find some way to publicize the restaurants closer to this side of town as opposed to the Berlin Turnpike. So it's kind of like Patrick has been willing to work with us all these years. He's also upped our publicity this year. Town of Berlin will be on the T-shirt this year, as well as some extra marketing materials. And for the new council members, if you want actual information about Nutmeg Games, Patrick Fisher is here to answer those questions.
Yeah, I mean, I'd love to hear more about it.
About the actual...
Did you say that generally, we waive these fees?
Yes. The field, we always waive the field fees because they pay out of pocket. They also do another big event for us a couple of weeks before, and they pay all fees for that. They don't ask for waiver of any of those fees.
Welcome.
Good evening. Yes, thank, nice to see you. Patrick Fisher, I'm the executive director of the Connecticut Sports Management Group. I first want to thank you guys for the support in previous years. I think we're rolling into our eighth year with the city of New Britain being host, but obviously, Berlin has played a large part in helping to, you know, take on some of the additional facility requests that we have. We schedule probably close to 700 team sport games and have 11 individual sport competitions for 7,000 athletes in a 22-day period. There's no city in Connecticut that can handle everything that we need, and Berlin's been really great to work with over the last couple of years. Since Chris has been in office as the economic development director, I've worked directly with him to make sure that there is an economic benefit to the town. We developed a list of restaurants, and also worked with Tim Stewart, who's the Greater New Britain Chamber as well, and they do a taste of Greater New Britain for the... They do a taste of Greater New Britain for the whole duration of the Nutmeg State Games, which we distribute to our audience, and there's multiple restaurants from Burlington in that. Benefits to Burlington besides that is, you know, we'll give you an ad in our program, which is produced by the New Britain Herald, and then some other marketing stuff, like the T-shirt that Janet mentioned.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, yeah, no, it's a great thing, and, you know, it brings, obviously, all these athletes in, and, you know, helps some of our businesses too, and...
Yeah, it's a significant number, so I just do appreciate the interpretation and the explanation.
Great, okay. We'll take a motion.
Move to approve waiving estimated field usage fees not to exceed the amount of $9,615 for the 2018 Nutmeg State Games to be held at Sage Park and Beretta Field from July 19th through July 29th, 2018.
Second on that?
Second.
Thank you, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so move.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just before, I think Jen, excuse me. I think Jen's leaving, but before she goes, as part of my report later, I was gonna note that the town's getting very close to having its own Facebook page. I just wanted to let you know that Jen's been working very closely with Kate, and they're putting together a Facebook page, so shortly, we're gonna be in the...
Great.
What, the 21st century?
We'll get there.
But I give her...
No, we don't wanna get that, we don't wanna move too fast, wait, wait, stop.
Well, she's on her own, she's doing a lot of work.
Okay, all right, Twitter is another tenure, so now we'll get to Twitter, yeah.
I didn't think we were doing Twitter, but we're taking all your phones away from you. She's been working very hard, I wanted to point that out before she left tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item number six, Timberland Golf Now tee time barter system. John Zuckey is here to go through and discuss with you the Golf Now marketplace, the tee time website, and how we wanna incorporate that up at the Timberland Golf Course.
Good evening. Timberland currently barters with Golf Now with one tee time that allows us to use their point-of-sale program and also their website with Golf Now. So we're looking to barter with a second tee time, which would give us access to their premium marketing program. Some of the highlights of the premium marketing program are the dynamic pricing system that Golf Now uses. As the tee time gets closer to the point of the tee time being used, if it's not filled, the software automatically adjusts the prices of the tee times, so we try and get that tee time filled and sold, so it doesn't go unused. And we also, we're also featured on the Golf Advisory, which is a national advisory of golf courses that people post comments on golf courses throughout the country. So this is some of the highlights of the premium marketing program.
Good. Question? Okay, take a motion on this?
Move to approve the Golf Now barter system allowing Golf Now access to a second tee time per day, each weekday between the hour of 11:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., and weekends between the hours of 1:00 to 2:00 p.m. during the months of April and December of Timberland. This will allow Timberland access to the Golf Now premier marketing program.
Great, second on that?
Second.
Thank you, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so move.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Agenda item number seven is the donation of golf rounds and cards for Xavier High School 26th Annual Black and White Auction. They're requesting the donation of a round of golfer four and two cards to be used as a raffle prize at their auction, and John is here still.
Okay.
If you have any questions, this again was approved by the Golf Commission at their March 1st meeting for the Xavier High School Black and White Auction. The Golf Commission felt there's quite a few community ties to Xavier High School with the citizens of Burlington, so they approved this donation and looking for your approval.
Okay. Okay, take a motion on this?
Move to approve a donation for a round of golfer four and two golf cards at Timberland Golf Course to be used as a raffle prize at the Xavier High School's 26th Annual Black and White Auction to be held at Xavier High School on Saturday, March 24th, 2018. Total value of the donation, $236.
Second on that?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so move.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Agenda item number eight is terminating of a grant agreement with CIL. redevelopment, there was a redevelopment project grant agreement between CIL Development of Kensington and the town. At which time, after the development of Sherwood, the Sherwood Mill, they were to further develop on the opposite side of the street. That work has not been done. The money was bonded, and for Kevin Delaney, I talked with our bond counsel, the money can't stay being unused and acquiring, building up interest. So therefore, we need to terminate the agreement so that we can transfer the money and use it for other town projects. We originally written the town agenda item, talking with Jim Mahoney, he felt that the, based on the meeting we had with them, he just wanted, uh... We reworded the motion if you would, so that's what he's giving out before you. Both Chris and Jim are here to discuss the action.
How you doing?
Well, good evening.
Nice trip.
Yeah, good trip, good trip, good. Came off in snow.
Take it back with you.
Probably will. The, as Jack said, the agreement was structured so that there were four progress payments based on performance, and the last piece hasn't been completed, and that's why, you know, we haven't made that payment. And basically, the idea is, you know, I think that the primary purpose of the project was to get the mill renovated, and they completed that portion of the project. We provided assistance in terms of helping with the brownfields remediation, and that work was done. Obviously, we had projected at the time, our idea was that the taxes would more than offset the bond costs. And we had projected, I think, about $200,000 a year in additional taxes, and that's been exceeded in the project. So I think the project's been successful. CIL, I would just say that, you know, they, I feel like, even though they haven't completed the project yet, and hopefully they will, some future point, we'll be working with them, continuing to work with them. But they made, they completed the major part of the project, and if we recall, they really, they started this project in 2008. So it was a terrible time to start a project, and a lot of developers probably would've walked away, but they, they stuck with it, they got it done, they saved, you know, one of our important historic buildings. So, you know, I think we appreciate their work there, and even though we're, you know, not gonna make this final payment because they haven't completed the project, hopefully we'll work with them in the future and complete that last phase at the corner of, you know, of Main Street looking at the plant.
Jim?
Yes.
Do they still claim a weak market, and that's why they're not putting up the townhouses?
I, you know, I mean, I think there's a lot of factors, you know, the market's probably one of them. Then the also, you know, they've been involved in some major projects in Hartford, I've read about those, and so a lot of resources have gone there. And there's, you know, I think there's other reasons too, you know, it's kinda a combination of things.
Thanks. Do we, do we think, any timeline when they may come back, or just no, there would be no way to tell?
I don't think we have a timeline. I mean, we met with them, I think they hoped to do it, but there was not any definitive timeline, and that was one of the reasons, I think, we said, okay, let's, you know, let's mutually agree to terminate the previous agreement. And that's, you know, in discussing with Jeff, that's the way he advised us to go, and they, they're receptive to that, so, you know, I think, leave it on a good note at this point, and then hopefully we can keep on working with them.
Yeah, they did a good job at the factory there, so, that's good. Okay, take a motion on this?
Move to direct staff to negotiate a termination agreement with mutual releases with CIL Development of Kensington incorporated with respect to the redevelopment project grant agreement dated November 2009 concerning 1 and 10 Main Street, Kensington.
Second on that?
Second.
Thank you, any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so move.
Agenda item number nine is a E-24 referral for the purchase of the 861 Farmington Avenue. Upon approval, this will refer the matter to Planning and Zoning Commission for the review pursuant to E-24 of the Connecticut General Statute. Chris is here to discuss the details and questions.
Yes, 861 Farmington Avenue was the property that is adjacent to 889 that we own, looking for TOD development. We received a grant from OPM to purchase this property and the rail bit. I'm essentially just asking you to send this to PMZ through 824 to review, and then bring it back to you.
Okay. Take a motion on this?
Move to refer the matter of purchasing 861-65 Farmington Avenue to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a review pursuant to Section 8-24 of the Connecticut General Statute.
Second on that?
Second.
Thank you, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so move. Thank you, Chris.
Agenda item number 10 tonight is the award of contract number 2018-11 to Michael's Pipe Services for the Belcherbrook Relining Project. I think you heard Art say that we are looking at doing some more relining of pipes to prevent high and low into the sewer system. This is the next project that we've got on the books. We've gone out and we've secured bids. Michael's Pipe Services was a little bitter. We are working with the State DEP on a low-interest loan to pay for this project. The low bid was a total cost of not to exceed $2,295,583. And Ray Turin is here to discuss any other details or questions you may have.
Hey, Ray. So just more work on what we need to do with some of this relining?
Yes, Michael's is a, really was purchased over by Highcamp, excuse me, the other way around. Highcamp was one where we've done the individual lining for Webster Square, which they did a nice job for us, and then, so Michael's became the lowest bidder. Second lowest bidder is still a subsidiary of Michael's, which is interesting, because we're like $500,000 difference. This actually puts us in pretty good financial stead. As you recall, we did have a $3 million bond approval with the additional authorization for the next item in terms of additional cost for the consultant, which would be rolled in. It only conducted about 2.2, so in that, we think is gonna be, gives us a little bit of free board also in terms of money. So we're looking forward to that, because that'll reduce the charges for customer.
Great, reduce charges, that's always good to hear. Okay, take a motion on this?
Move to authorize the acting town manager to award contract number 2018-11 Belcherbrook Interceptor Sewer Relining to Michael's Pipe Services and to enter into change orders as required for a total, for a total cost not to exceed
Second on that?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion, questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so move.
Okay, agenda item number 11 is the award contract, well, it's actually, the contract's not awarded, but we're looking for amendments number five and six for Belcherbrook Interceptor. Cardinal Engineering has been the engineering firm that's been working on this since the first part of the project. We're getting to the part where we're going to do the actual work. They've submitted amendment five and six. Amendment six is for the construction administration, which is probably the largest part of the project, $164,585. I think it's, but we're advising that we should go ahead and contract with them for that oversight, make sure that the project's done, you know, they have somebody on the ground out there making sure the project's done for the specifications. They also help us with the, make sure the proper paperwork is submitted, the DEP for the loans and for completion of the project. And Ray is here to go through the details.
Yeah, the only thing I would add is that the amendment five was required is because we had some issues with Bernal pools and had to include the Army Corps, so that was an unanticipated cost. It's not as large amount of cost, it's less than $6,000. And the additional cost, both the cost that the authorization, as Jack indicated, for construction oversight is extremely important. I went through it partially with Cardinal and the Webster Square. They did an excellent job oversight, because they gotta go back in and make sure that the actual relining is thick enough so that it sufficiently passes. So that, that's an important aspect of that, and both of these have been approved by DEP.
Great, motion on this?
Move to authorize the acting town manager to approve amendment number five for $5,575, and amendment number six for $159,000, being a total amount of $164,575 for contract number 2008-24 for Cardinal Engineering, the cost to be incorporated into the DEP loan application for the Belcherbrook Interceptor Relining Project.
Second on that?
Second.
Thank you, any questions, further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so move. Thank you, thanks, Ray. Okay, we're onto some appointments here. Hold on, but this one, so number three, the nomination for Commission for Persons with Disabilities. Make it sense, okay? Move to appoint Peter B. Zero for Commission for Persons with Disabilities. Okay, thank you, any further nominations? Hearing none, close the nominations, and vote on Mr. Zero, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so move. I guess, so, okay, Mr. Chatlis, he doesn't want to be on anymore?
Correct.
He's been on a long time, so... I don't blame him, probably, so... Been there a very long time, but it's okay. There's, there's something with the Golf Commission, but I'd like to hold off on that. Let's see, a couple of members of the Golf Commission here, but... So, there's two people that are, and I asked both of them if they would kinda work it out, between, you know, which one, I talked to Ron, but I know Jeff also came in after that, and... So I, you know, I kinda want them to decide who to go on it, because that was a spot we added for that, you know, the men's senior club, and I talked to Jeff a while ago. I said, I'd get you a spot, and I said, please, you guys figure out who you wanna put on there, so, you know, I mean, it's their club, and they're both in the club, I understand, and Jeff, I think, is the president. Is Jeff the president? Is he the president? I don't know, but, so, if they would, you know, I told Ron to call Jeff, and I actually talked to Mark Barham the other day, and I said, just, you know, he mentioned Jeff, and I said, let those two guys figure out which one, so they will be happy, because, again, we added the spot for them, and I'd rather they choose which representative go on there rather than us have to make that decision and upset any more of the apple cart. So I'd rather, so if we could send that along to them, and I, like I say, hopefully they're speaking, and so we can put this on the next agenda, which, whatever person they can come to that. They can arm wrestle for it, whatever, whatever they need to do for it, so... Okay, appreciate that, just make sure they get the message. I'm sure they already got that message, but I'd rather they come up to it with us. Okay, so, the other one, let's see, what else we got? I'd like to wait on the Housing Authority too, I just wanted to talk to Joe a little bit first. And if we could do the inland wetlands? Yes.
Would be number 11?
Number 11, yes, if you can have a nomination.
Move to appoint John F. Zerotny for inland wetlands and water courses commission.
Great, thanks, any further nominations for that? Hearing none, close the nominations, and all those in favor, Mr. Zerotny?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so move, thank you, and, what else we got? I just wanna hold on that one for a minute, I don't know, just wanna talk to that gentleman. I haven't spoken to him, so, we'll just put that off for the next one too, with the Golf Commission, then Mr. Gudorski, if that would be okay? Okay, so that'll take care of the appointments, right? Town manager?
All right, just a few things to report. The Burlington Street Bridge, we received the bids, we had a little bidder, but at this point, we've, we're opting just to hold on that. point, we've, we're opting just to hold on that. Again, the state transportation fund money's being held up, so we aren't guaranteed our reimbursement. We felt that amongst the staff that we didn't want to issue the contract, put the town out there and not be guaranteed to get our reimbursement, so we're holding in that contract. We signed, we did sign the purchase agreement for cybersecurity awareness training, we're completing our business continuity plan, we're continuing down the path and working on our business continuity, this was the next step, so we're working to have a cybersecurity awareness training for all employees. I did mention the Facebook with Jen, she was here, but also as part of that, we're drafting electronic media policy. The town has one, but it was probably in excess of ten years old, we felt it was time to update it, so, again, Kate and Jen are working on the rewording of the electronic media, excuse me, electronic media policy. I did receive, and I think the mayor received, a letter from the library committee expressing interest in building, moving or building a library on the Farmington Avenue property, and I thought that we should just mention that. We did go to Hartford and we did meet with the DEP about the TOD and we are looking at, you know, acquiring the property there, so, I did receive a board of letters from the library committee board requesting that, you know, it be considered for that area. Also, I think several people attended the security program last night as a town, as the top of the town side, you know, obviously there's a lot of effort being put into the schools currently, but on the town side, we are also looking at security items, I mean, if we get the low seed money, we'll be putting new doors and locks on this facility. We are doing assessments at the community center and at the library, you know, we're in position, position cameras, we may adjust time, times of openings, so that we coordinate the opening of the library and the community center. I also met with Jen Chelton, I think, because after being there, I want to make sure that all of our offices, all of our departments have security, security programs, you know, we all have to do in case of there's an emergency. I started with Jen today and we went through like the programs, we said, you know, what if you, you know, you're out at the pool, what, do we have a security program for the people at the pools, the fields, things like that? So, she's, we're going to be working on updating and making sure that all of our security plans are up to date and, you know, and are comparable with what the standards are. On Friday, the mayor and I met with other regional, you know, some of the first elected mayors in the area. One thing that came out of that, and they will be coming, I think at the next meeting to give a presentation, is recycling of clothes and fabric. It's an interesting program. It is a company who will do this for, basically, it's no cost to the town. It does take, and the reason it's a good thing to the town, it takes pound, you know, weight out of our, out of our waste stream and we pay sixty-seven dollars a ton for that. It takes it out of the waste stream, it gives a small reimbursement back to the town for the, for the material they take away. They coordinate it to go on the same days that you have your normal pickup, so it's not unusual if it's in. The only thing you'll see is big pink bags on the side of the road, so that homeowners can fill up the bag, put it up on the side of the road and they'll pick that up. I think both the mayor and I thought it was a good idea, that the more that we can recycle and take out of the waste stream, the better it is for the town.
And Rocky Hill, they just are implementing it, they just approved it, they're trying to get like, because, right, the company, you know, the more it gets in the area, it's better for all of us and, yeah, it seems great to clean out our closets and whoever else we don't want to donate, you know, things that you feel like you can't donate, but they'll, they'll take it along, you know, whether, I think, they take shoes.
Yeah, sneakers, in fact, they said, if there's a single shoe, they would like that because, they said, there are people out, there are people who have suffered from war or other situations where they've lost, they've lost a leg and they, they'd like to have those single shoes, so, it was interesting just going through the conversation with them, they, they'll take, they'll even take your smelly old sneakers, they said. They probably won't sell them, they'll probably shred them.
Yeah, they shred, right, they shred them and use them for like the, you know, the track surfaces or basketball courts.
Yeah, that's great.
So, yeah, it seemed, it seemed almost too good to be true, but the lady will come and talk to us next, the next meeting.
I believe Harlington has just signed a contract, Torquay was in the process, so they're trying to get more, you know, the towns in Connecticut to sign up, makes it more viable for them. I think they said they had nine thousand towns or cities in the country.
In the country, yeah. That's interesting.
The other part of the conversation was regional services. There was a takeaway for the public works directors and town managers to put together a list of regional services that, one, we are currently sharing amongst the towns in the area, and two, ones that we think down the road, we could share, you know, and one of the things that came up, we've discussed this before, is maybe there's a way of sharing our, you know, handle control services and things like that. Also, like, we talked about large equipment in public works, not every town needs, you know, three loaders or a grader or a backhoe, you know, so that the towns would like regionalize and say, we own, we own a street sweeper, maybe Rocky Hill doesn't, and so we let them take that and we borrow something back in return. So, they've tasked us with going and looking at what equipment we have and being able to come up with a way of being able to share equipment, because you don't use that equipment every day, and so when it's hitting high, you know, maybe another town could use it. And that keeps the capital cost for each of the towns down.
Yeah, there, you know, I mean, we all have heard that, right, from Hartford and, you know, talking to Joe Arson, what's to, you know, the regionalism is something that is coming and, you know, and it's something that our state's very, very bad at, regionalizing anything, no one wants to give up their little fiefdom of the hundred and sixty-nine towns we have, but I think, you know, economically speaking down the road, if we could share things, certainly equipment seemed, that seemed like an easy one for at least the towns here around Berlin, right? And I know, you know, we've talked about other things, you know, police dispatch, that's one that sometimes works out and different, different things like that.
Yeah, they talked about Litchfield County Dispatch, that's one of them, that's a regional dispatch.
Successful one.
Yeah, it's up at Torrington and therefore all that, that northwest part of the state. The Northwest Cobb also has a equipment housing where they regionalize. They, they, they go out and obtain grants and then they have a core group of public works director who evaluate those pieces of equipment and then one of the towns will house, will house that equipment, I was in Litchfield, I evaluated, it sounds strange, you take old asphalt and you recycle it, and so we evaluated that and you can make hot patch for the wintertime instead of using cold patch, you actually have this piece of equipment, you grind it with the asphalt, you put it in a truck and you go out in the middle of February and you have a hot patch, which is a better quality material than cold patch, so, that was something in Litchfield's housing, Goshen houses one piece of equipment, so they already have a program like that in place, so.
So, it's worth looking at, the mayor's in the area, you want to, you know, the towns are looking at doing that, so that's, would be good and, you know, see what we can do with that, maybe save some money there, right?
Yeah, and the last thing I have on here, maybe shouldn't be last, probably should have been first, was I'd like to introduce our new DNA administrator, Wendy Russo, she's here tonight and she's going to be in executive session with you, but I want to introduce Wendy and also our clinical manager, Jennifer Beechey, they both went with us, I think, now eight weeks or six to eight weeks.
Not bad, it's longer.
Wait a minute, that doesn't sound good.
It's a good thing.
Too much work for you?
It's fun.
Good. Well, welcome, glad to have you.
Thank you.
Glad you both are here. You need the help, as you say, so, glad you're here.
Thank you.
Thanks. Special committee reports, I know we were supposed to have one tonight, but just because, right, I think both, I think both Amy and, right, Brendan are on the, right?
Ordinance, we canceled that.
The ordinance, right, so we'll have to.
We're going to reschedule, I think we talked about rescheduling, possibly depending on people's availability before our next town council meeting.
Okay, all right.
We'll send out an email and see what availability is.
Okay. I think that's it, right, there hasn't been any other special report for committee meeting today? Aware of, I know the, right, the Board of Finance is working on the budget, right? Anyone in the Board of that time, one more time?
Tonight is the, you know, the Board of Finance should be meeting right about now. They've gone through the budget, I believe that tonight they're going to work with the Board of Education and I think that they have to finalize their budget.
Do you have the public hearing?
The public hearing, I had, Kate has sent out to you a, just a reminder, so that you had a reminder of what the schedule's like to, so we meet all of our deadlines to meet with the requirements of this town charter for the, for the finance.
Okay. Yeah, good. So, we've got the public meetings set next Tuesday, right? Right, seventh, and then we have our joint meeting, remember, we're going to meet with the, yeah, Thursday for the, for the jail cells?
And after, that's our public, after the, after the town, the Board of Finance sets their budget, you have five days to review it and then adopt it, reduce it or reject it.
And they set it on the twenty-eighth or the, what do they have to set it for?
Well, I think, to believe the schedule is for them to adopt it on the twenty-eighth, the day after, is it after the meeting? After the meeting.
So, we have five business days?
That was, that was my interpretation as five business days, so, and we didn't count Good Friday as being a business day, so, we said you had Thursday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday the following week. You have, you have to put it on the calendar, the next agenda, so we're going to put it on that, and then if you needed to, you would have a special meeting after the time, after your normal meeting, if you needed to, on a Wednesday or Thursday.
Okay, so, so, get the schedule, we don't have a lot of time, but, so we'll put it on the next meeting for the council, which is the third, third, right? Third, right? Third is the next time, okay.
And Kate just reminded me, if you meet on the third, you can't have the meeting on Wednesday because you have to post the meeting, so you could only have the meeting, the special meeting on Thursday, the fifth, because of posting.
Unless we posted ahead of time, it was canceled.
Oh.
Except for whatever, that's why.
Let's post that ahead of time, rather than wait till the last day, so, if you guys can, if we, you know, I'm assuming we may need.
Are you comfortable with the Wednesday meeting or more comfortable with the Thursday?
Well, that's what I was going to ask you, can we do, and I'm just worried if we wait till Thursday, that's the last possible day, could you make the fourth? Is that okay?
I might be a little bit late, but I'll be here.
Okay.
It's seven o'clock here.
Yeah, I guess we can do seven, good for you?
Late, it's seven thirty, I don't want to keep you guys up.
You want to do seven thirty?
That's fine. And where, here?
Yeah, here.
I'll have to, I'm sorry, did we, on Wednesday or Thursday?
Wednesday.
Wednesday, seven thirty, I have to check on the availability, but I'll let you all know.
We'll check with, obviously, Amy and Brendan too, but, you know, we'll check with them too.
I can send out another email following the one I sent out.
That's the fourth, correct? The special meeting is the fourth, right? So, just in case, you know, you know, if we need, the last day would be the fifth, we have to decide, I mean, not that, I hope, I hope we don't need it, but, just in case, we could do.
You want to do another one on Thursday?
Yes, let's just set it that way, if we don't need it, we cancel, if we need it, we have it, so we don't run into notice.
Seven o'clock or seven on Thursday?
Let's try seven on that.
Yeah, I'm open.
All right, so, we'll do seven on the fifth, here, if it's available.
I, I'm happy to do both, yes. The number just canceled the match.
Yeah, because, you know, I mean, it's already a very short timeframe and I just worry, you know, talk for an hour or two and then we want to take a break and, because we have a couple options, we don't have a.
Snowstorm or something.
Oh, yeah, well, yeah, the way it's going, I'm sure there's some more snowstorms coming, but, so, yeah, I mean, we don't have a lot of time, so hopefully we'll get a lot out of the public hearing.
And just so you're aware, like we said, the public hearing is the twenty-seventh.
Yeah.
The Board of Finance will meet on the twenty-eighth. Their final budget will be sent to you on the twenty-ninth.
Okay.
That, it will be, okay, that morning, but it's going to be sent to you electronically.
On the twenty.
Now, Peter, if you want, I can print it off for you or get your hard copy, but I'll have to, you have to.
I'll screen it.
Yeah, okay?
Yeah.
All right, and then we'll have it as an item on your agenda for April third and then we'll have the two meetings on the fourth and the fifth.
Yeah, I think that's good, huh? You think that's good?
Just in case.
Yeah, yeah, we don't want to, because it's not a lot of time and, you know, hopefully they come up with a good budget, but, you know, there may be some things we want to, I mean, remember, right, we can lower as the council, if we so vote and send it on to the referendum, we can accept it, send it on.
Or reject it.
Or reject it, or we can, if we want to raise it, we need that super, so, actually, how would that, so.
We'd have to reject it and then.
Yeah, we'd have to reject it, right?
It goes to that super.
It goes to the super majority thing, right, if we want to raise.
I can't believe.
So, actually, so, let's just say for the heck of it, we rejected it and we wanted to raise it, all right?
We then have a joint meeting.
When, when would that be, though, will we have time to schedule that?
Yes, we would have to schedule that.
Okay, well, then, let's hope we don't have to go through all that, but, just, we need to make sure we get it right, right, because the timeframe is fairly quick for us, so, you know, I guess we can study on our own and hopefully.
And you all have received the minutes from the Board of Finance budget meetings, so if you do have questions on that, then I would ask you to probably reach out to Jack or to, you know, Kevin Finance Director, and that way hopefully.
It's not final in any way, I think we don't.
It'll be finalized hopefully tonight until the public hearing and then, at least, you'll have some idea at the public hearing what they are attending and you'll probably hear something, you know, I'm, I'm sure, I can send out whatever it is or Jack can tell me what it is from tonight and I can send it out to you tomorrow, I'll have Kevin for something, all right?
Yeah, just, I mean, but, you know, I think the, at least the benefit we have is hopefully you guys can make it, you know, to the public hearings and we'll get the whole presentation from them, which would be great, you know, then we can, then we see it all and we know what to do. Okay, great, thanks. Okay, so, that was special committee, so, I'll take that time as our council communication, so anyone else, council communications?
Yeah, one thing, the Friends of Baseball, which is the boosters club for the high school, is having a golf tournament at Timberland, May sixth, you can contact me, I'm interested, but it's for our high school kids and that's their one fundraiser for the year.
I also have something, I attended a meeting last week with the Central Connecticut Health District about the opioid crisis and there will be, hopefully, if everything works out right, a forum here in Berlin on May sixteenth, they'll be for those caregivers for people in recovery and so when I hear more and if it is a definite, I will, I will share it, really share it with Chinesa, she's been at Athens as well, so, keep you guys informed. The other thing is, I did meet briefly with Terry Reed, who is Terry Jarantana, Senator Jarantana's aide, she does have a lot of information about the disposal boxes for meds and I just haven't had a chance to get back to her and us sit together so that I can bring more information to the council, so, I'm in process and we'll get that for us, for the police station.
We got to do that, it's just so simple.
I agree.
You know, I mean, we got, we got to do that. I don't, at the PD at one point, they don't want it, but, we'll have.
I think one of the things that might be for the current police station is you do have to have someone there who's able to watch it.
Yeah.
And it, it, there's not a lot of room.
Right, in the lobby.
First walk-in.
Right.
And the only one that I've seen is pretty large and it wouldn't fit there.
Okay.
So, and I don't know how many different sizes, but like I said, I'll get more information from Terry and Brittany to you guys.
I mean, we'll talk to the chief and, do they have a camera in the lobby or, is there a camera?
We do have cameras in the lobby.
Dispatch is right there looking out the window, right?
Yeah.
Okay, well, we'll figure it out, but I just.
When you say it has to be watched, does it have to be like somebody sitting there or the camera?
And I'm not sure about that, I was told it just has to be under like observation and I know when you print, I was told they put it there because they have somebody there who is able to see it, so, I'm not sure what, because there's definite rules about it and again, I'll get with Terry and get all the information.
Yes, the rules are from, they're, it's from Department of Consumer Protection, State Drug Control, they're the, I think, actually, they're the ones that regulate those, so actually, we probably should talk to them, I mean, I've talked to them a long time at my job, so, you know, I'll see what we can get, because I think they might approve, I think they have to approve them actually, Department of Consumer Protection.
Yeah, because I think I read something about it and there's definite rules, but Terry has all that.
Okay, all right, so, we'll get it, but like I say, I mean, the dispatch window is right there, right? They're sitting there.
Yeah, dispatch window, we moved them, but they're still right there.
They're still right there, they can see out that window, obviously, right? We'll figure it out, but I, you know, it's just such a, you know, I mean, everything becomes complicated today, but it is a simple thing and I don't see why.
It would be a good thing for not only, you know, for the opioid crisis, but also for our strains and ritters, because we don't want to have the drugs going in there and impacting the environment adversely.
Yeah, and we do the, I know we do the twice a year, you know, the national DEA pickup in Berlin, but, again, you know, the whole point, certainly with the opioids, are that the longer they hang around in someone's house, they're a target for unfortunately, you know, different folks that. you know, different folks that come in their house, whether it's their kids, or visitors, or whoever, so the faster you can get them out of the house, or wherever they're at, that no one, you know, can fortunately use them for something that they shouldn't be, and, so, yeah, all right, we'll, we'll get that done. Thank you for that. That's great. Anyone else?
None, none, other than I did have a twenty-minute conversation with Pat Checo about becoming more involved in Berlin. For some reason, we're like one of the only towns that are involved in our area that doesn't have recovery meetings, and so, yeah, so she, she'd like to get some people involved in spearheading that, so we're going to be meeting about that pretty soon. Just waiting for an email on scheduling. I, Joe, I still wanted to talk about, and I don't know why, I tried emailing you all the paperwork, and I could not attach it for the life of me, but about that opt-in.
I do have one of my towns that's in that case, so I know what's going on in the case. The judge, Judge McCauser, you know, who sits in Hartford on the complex litigation docket is handling it, and there was a concern about a potential conflict of interest, we just got an email today that that's been resolved, so it is early enough in the case where if it's something the town wants to participate in, now would be the time to look at that.
Right, because as I understand it, I mean, there's really, there's really no kind of strain on us, other than producing paperwork if necessary, right? I mean, there's no cost.
Well, we'll see. I mean, you know, litigation, to the extent that there's expert witnesses required, then the plaintiffs would have to share those costs.
Right, okay, yeah, but, okay, yeah, it would be, I think it would be pretty nominal, though, I mean, considering the amount of people that are involved in it, or the amount of towns, rather, that are involved in it.
Did Berlin actually receive any documents? I haven't received anything regarding.
I don't know, I don't know that we have, because when I talked with.
I don't think so.
Yeah, I, I have them, though. I have the contract, I have the feasibility study.
Yeah, I can reach out to David Slossberg, who's handling it, and find out if he can send me whatever he sent.
Yeah, I'm just thinking if.
Should I do that?
I, I would, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, sure.
I mean, if there's a possibility of us realizing something from it eventually, and it's not a burden on us in any way, I think it's worth.
Okay, I'll reach out to David, and I'll, by the next meeting, I'm sure I'll have information to share.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Anything? Thank you. Okay.